Call the Goshen Board of Education, March 7, 2022, 7:00 PM, reger meeting to order. Mr. Schink, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Herrera.
Here.
Mrs. Gray.
Here.
Mrs. Casey.
Here.
Mr. Benteen.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here. We have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions? If not, Mr. Schink, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Herrera.
Yes.
Mrs. Gray.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mr. Benteen.
Yes.
Mr. Gray.
Yes. At this time, can we have a moment of silence? Thank you. At this time, we'd like to ask Mrs. Walker, the principal of high school, to lead us into the pledge.
I have some helpers today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay. So I have lots of fantastic students here today along with two of our amazing teachers to talk a little bit about our Disney band and choir trip. And I think always when kiddos come to present, they get a little bit nervous. And I told them that this is quite the harmless crowd today. But I'm hoping, and again, I'm going to introduce our two adults here in just a moment, but really giving you an authentic conversation about their experience, because it was quite the experience. I'm so fortunate that I got to go along with them this year. Again, I think about being a kid and how wonderful it would be to be able to have an experience just like that. So we're so lucky and fortunate here. So I would like to take a minute to turn this over to Mrs. Hansford and Mr. Ochsenschlecht, Ms. Rowe, who is going to come up here and talk with us a little bit about that experience, and then we'll roll it over to our kids.
Start you want me to?
Okay, wonderful.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Nice to see you. I'm Mrs. Hansford, and I am the high school and middle school choir director along with Mrs. Petty. Maybe you have Mrs. Petty as well. When we do this trip every four years, for the choir, it's a really great opportunity to change up our process. Generally, for choir, we learn some music, we put on a concert, and then we turn our music in, new music, and then we put on a concert. And so it goes. That's the cycle. When we do a Disney year, we have literally been working on the same music and the same show since August. It allows us to refine. It allows us to perform, feedback, fix, make it better and better and better. And the opportunity to prepare for a trip where we get to perform in an amazing venue in front of crowds of people that we don't know, as opposed to our parents and friends that we know and love us no matter what, is just, I think it really helps the students grow to the point where the experience that they've had is going to carry over into the coming years. And they will be setting examples for students who come after them of how we prepare and how we take this seriously and how represent our school and how important it is. And I just want to thank you so much for your approval and your support and allowing us to take the kids on this amazing experience. Thank you.
All right. I need this?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Just lean over, Ellen.
Okay.
Lean over.
All right. So, yes, I'm Mr. Ochsenschlecht, and I appreciate so much the opportunity for us to go back to Disney. The performances were both amazing. And the preparation for it, a little bit different on the band side, as it was a little bit unique. We kind of only had a few rehearsals to kind of get things together, and the students were phenomenal in their preparation. Just an amazing performance completely blew me away. The pride that I have in the students is just unbelievable in their work ethic. And just seeing their smiles on their faces is just the sheer joy of like, oh my gosh, I'm performing in Disney World. And they're going to tell you all about it in just a few seconds. But from like, as an educator and, you know, someone who's seen these students grow from, you know, sixth grade on, it's just, it's such an awesome experience for me personally. So, thank you once again. Thank you.
So can we, why don't we do this? Instead of coming up front, maybe you guys stand up. And perhaps, I don't know if you've thought about what you want to share, but I want to give everybody a voice just to be able to talk about what was your, perhaps your favorite memory, what that trip meant to you, just a little blurb to share that experience with everybody here.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, introduce yourself.
Can I make one quick announcement?
Yes.
Ms. Michaela Mackey is a junior, and she is not feeling well today. And she had to regretfully decline. So I asked if anybody else wanted to come and speak in her place. So her name's not up there, but down there, Caitlin, if you want to. Caitlin is the unnamed player for later. So I just wanted to say that before we got started.
All right. You get to lay the pack here.
Okay. I'm Taylor Smiley. I'm actually an eighth grader at the middle school, but I'm really, I try to be involved with the high school before I actually come in here. But I've been in band since fifth grade, and never did I think that I was going to Disney and like marching directly in the middle of the tracks through the Magic Kingdom. And like the trip, it was, it was like really fun. Like even the bus ride down there, I thought it was going to be like, oh, it's the bus ride. But no, it was amazing. And I want to thank both of the teachers, everyone, for trying to keep us safe and in line, which they did a phenomenal job. And it was really fun and the performance. It's weird because like, you stop playing for a second and you look around and you're like, holy crap. Yes, a lot of people, and I'm just in the Magic Kingdom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Danica Cole Morgan. I'm a senior. And I came to Goshen my freshman year. I didn't initially want to join marching band, but I was in concert band. And they're like, oh, you should come and join. It'll be so much fun. We're going to Disney senior year. And I was like, I could get behind Disney, so. And just like Taylor was saying, she was like, because you know, we march in homecoming and we do like the light-up ocean parade. And those are pretty fun. Like you get to see all the Goshen people on the sidelines and you know some of them. And then you go to Disney and they're like, it's just multiplied by all the different kinds of people there. And you see them all have their phones and you just like become part of their vacation. And it's just a really cool experience to be able to share music with all those different kinds of people.
My name's Phoebe Maxwell. I'm a sophomore. And I know for myself and a lot of the other people in marching band, music is like a major part of our lives. And being in the band is like a really great experience. So being able to go and share it with everyone and seeing all like the different cultures and seeing, you know, like everyone come to Disney and just being able to like, they were paying attention to us. And I think that was really cool. Yeah.
I agree.
Hi, I'm Jayla Palkner, and I'm in eighth grade in the middle school. And at first, I was like, I didn't really know I was going to actually be performing in Disney. Like, I knew we were going to Disney, and it didn't ding on me until we were there. Like, it was like we were going backstage. And I was like, it's actually pretty cool because it's like, you're like, the people that are like in the parade, you're not the people watching it. So like, people were watching you, like, do your thing and be good. So I thought that was really cool because it's like, you know, you're like a cool person. Like, you're like living people's dreams. So I thought that was cool. So it's kind of like a dream, us, because, yeah.
I'm Carly Tredway. I'm a junior here at the high school. Something that's kind of funny to me is like eight, nine years ago, my older brother Chris Tredway joined band specifically because they were going to Disney that year. I did not do what he did. I've been in band for years now. But it was really amazing to get to go because I wasn't expecting to have as much fun as I did doing parades because normally I'm like, ugh, parades, those are so boring. My arms hurt afterwards, but at Disney, I was like, let's go! And it was really fun, too, because there was this one lady at the end of the parade that I definitely remember. She had her Mickey Mouse ears on, and she goes, "Yeah, low brass", which was great because I play a low brass. And then she goes, "Oh, my gosh, wait, that's a female low brass player. Heck, yeah!" And so it was just really fun getting to experience like that. And then also I got to do it with choir as well because I was in show choir, too, which was just really enjoyable. So thank you so much for allowing us to go and for supporting us in all that we do.
I'm Athena Hubbard, and I'm a sophomore here at the high school. I've been in choir for four years, and I never thought that I was going to be going to Disney. And it was just really amazing because you put in so much work. And the concerts here, they're nice and they teach you how to be professional. But when you go to Disney, you do so much more work and you're so much more prepared and you work so much harder that it's just really worth it in the end.
Hi, I'm Lucas Ryan. I'm a freshman. I'm in chamber choir. I sing bass, not that it's relevant, but. So Disney is like, first and foremost, it's an opportunity, you know? So we have, you know, I wouldn't call them seasonal, but they are seasonal, our concerts. And I've been in choir for a while, so I've been to quite a few concerts and performed them and learned the music for them. But Disney, it's different, you know? From the beginning, it's a sort of singe of professionalism in it. And it's an opportunity as a performer and as just a human being in general to do something amazing and to have a goal to work the whole year to get to. And then to be at Disney and get on a stage and be, wow, I am on a stage at actual Disney World. Whoa! It's cool. It's an opportunity. That's it, yeah.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Humphries. I am a junior. And I don't think anyone who didn't perform understands how much of a surreal experience that Disney was. Like, when they first like announced us everywhere, it was insane. Like Goshen Choir from Ohio, that's insane. I remember I was in, I think, seventh grade when the choir went last. And I'm like, I'm going to do that. And then I got to do that, and that was pretty cool. Thank you.
My name is Domino Thomas. I'm a senior at Goshen High School. And for me, I've been in choir since eighth grade. And that's a fairly long time. When I was in eighth grade, I was not very professional at all. I was talking out of turn, being relatively unprofessional. And through the years, choir has taught me how to be professional. And what's more professional than live performance at Disney World? They held their performers to some of the highest standards ever. And I think that is an amazing learning opportunity for anyone and as well as just the fact like, whoa, we're at Disney World. This is awesome. So I think that that was the biggest learning experience I've actually ever had in life so far. Thank you.
If you don't mind, the top link on there, Mr. Bailey, is actually the choir performance. And I want to, I want to play that because it's very, very brief and short. The band lasts forever in a day, and we live sped that. But I want you to just get a little feel of this. And I think you'd have to hit the volume a little bit up here. And as Caitlin says. Push that back a tiny bit. It's starting again. Pull this back. You do hear what Caitlin talked about.
Disney Dreams and Disney Imagination Campus are pleased to present Goshen High School Concert Choir from Goshen, Ohio, under the direction of Jennifer Hansford. Please welcome to the Advent Melt Waterside Stage, Goshen High School Concert Choir.
And I hope that all of you got to see the live feed of the bands. It's kind of a weird thing. I thought that I was going to march with them, and then something happened where I got stuck back at the hotel for a bit. But I came, and I don't think I was supposed to march with them, but I had the camera and I told them that I was live feeding it to everybody in Ohio. So I got to pee right there. To be able to do that was.
Earl did it with the IP treatment.
Yes, he did. He did. I was well taken care of. So I could not be more proud of this whole group of students. When I think about representing our school extraordinarily behaved, it was truly a very proud moment to be the principal and sit back and watch our kids perform on that stage. It was amazing, and I'm so glad that you guys came to talk about that today. And again, we thank all of you for giving us the stamp of approval to go ahead and experience this. Thank you. You guys did a great job.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, so where did the choir perform? Where was that stage? What part of?
Disney Springs.
Oh, okay.
So big shopping plaza, lots of people there. Behind us, or like, I guess it was kind of in front of us was the Rainforest Cafe.
Oh, yeah.
We saw the fire like right before we came. It was really cool.
Yeah, we go there every time we go down there. So the marching band, did you see a performance before you guys did it? Or it was just like, you get there, you're, did you see a parade like the day before? Or did you perform it?
Yeah, so we saw like all the Disney princesses, and they were just like waving. So we saw like those kind of parades before us.
Okay.
We kind of thought that there'd be like some people behind us.
Yeah.
But when we were lined up to like start the parade, we were like, there's no one behind us. I think it's just us. Okay, let's just go for it.
That's so cool. Yeah, let's think about that. They introduced Goshen High School marching band, and it was just a parade through the park. So that was remarkable. They weren't one of many bands. It was the Goshen Show that day, so it was good stuff.
It was overwhelming. It's great.
Great job, guys.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm glad you had so much fun. And when you go and represent yourself well and represent your school well, it encourages us to continue to allow our kids to do things like this and encourages these guys to continue providing those opportunities, too. And I just want to take a minute to thank on behalf of the board, Mrs. Hansford and Mr. Rowe, because that took a lot of their work and their time. And yeah, I know they enjoy going to Disney, too. But I also know that they fretted and worried about that trip as we all fretted and worried a little bit about that trip this year and whether it was going to happen. And thank you guys for your hard work with our kids. And Mrs. Walker, if you could help me, I think I have these in order.
Yep.
So you would.
All right, Taylor Smiley. Here you go, Micah. I'll put this. Do that. TV. Here you go. That's so pretty. Jayla, come and dance with me. Miss Harvey. Caitlin.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, you guys are welcome to go. You don't have to sit here for the longevity of this meeting. However, if you want to, I'm sure it will be absolutely enthralling.
Are you trying to say you want to go back home and study? Any job to all of you? Good job, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for representing Goshen. You did a good job.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Guys, all have a good night.
You too.
Okay, quick and fast, it is my day to be here. So I want to do a brief overview. I know that you have a large agenda today, and I took a lot of time, but I think it was time well-spent to be able to really brag about how our students did. A couple other things that were, a couple other things that are relevant for Goshen High School right now is on February 22nd, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony. We had thirty new members that were pulled in to NHS. And as always, and I know that many of you know this, but it really looks at scholarship, leadership, service, and character. And when you think of a portrait of a graduate, those are great skills that we want all of our kiddos to be able to walk out into the world, to be able to put those traits into action. It was a great evening. We had the largest, I believe, parent turnout that we've had in such a long time. And I think it was, it felt normal and good and wonderful. We kept saying that over and over and over again. So again, that was such a, that was a wonderful, a wonderful day. These are our new, our new inductees down here in this picture. They look exciting, excited in that picture, but they really were. The other piece that I just want to spend a second to talk about in collaboration with Mark Edwards, we recently pulled all of our sophomores and gave them an interest inventory survey where they could go in and try to figure out what are their ambitions as they leave us in high school. And it was a great, well, we had to encourage some to be able to participate in that. But the wonderful thing that came along with that was that we had job mentors for each of those students where they had a forty-five-minute session with a professional that is in the field area, in the strand that showed that they had interest in. So I think the timing of that was perfect because right now, we're right in the middle of scheduling. So when we're thinking about, my goodness, this is what my inventory said that I might be interested in a little bit later in life, that gave them really the nexus into looking at some of our career pathway cards to take courses that might fit that field that they were looking at. So that's been a wonderful opportunity. I think Mr. Edwards is working on getting an article for us to get out so that we can really promote that and getting some student voice in what was important that they received out of that opportunity. So more to come on that. I am stressing, we're in the middle of scheduling for next year. Freshmen, current freshmen, sophomores have scheduled. Tomorrow, we have our juniors walking through the process. We have done, as we have, we have the past couple of years, virtual meetings for parents to talk through the scheduling process and have shared all of that information out with enough time for our students to really be able to dive into the documents to figure out what it is exactly that they want to do. So that is where we are with that. I do want to, just again, thinking about normalcy, we had our coming home dance after a couple of cancellations. One to high numbers of sicknesses, the other to the huge storm that had horrible timing that was giving all of us some stress, I believe. But it was amazing. And again, some of these pictures that are up here, this is the coolest, normal, fantastic coming home dance photo, and it makes you smile just to be able to look at that. The picture down below of this individual, they're in the middle of a mentoring session. They all had headphones on, and they were talking in a virtual session. In this photo here, it's just demonstrating all of our, I think this was freshman on Friday of last week and working with the counselors to be able to schedule classes. So as you know, the spring is an incredibly busy time for the high school as we're starting to wrap up and have some great experiences to close the school year. We'll have a lot to celebrate in the next couple of weeks slash months as we're wrapping up a school year. But again, it's been a wonderful year, lots to celebrate. And again, we have a lot more that is heading our way in the next couple of weeks. But thank you, as always, for supporting us, allowing us to have these fantastic kiddos to come in here and brag about their passions. And again, just thank you for being you, being here, being present, supporting our kids, and supporting our teachers. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would like you to go, but we really think you should stay.
Well, you know, I'm going to check some kids in at 4:30 in the morning for this retreat. So truly, I'm setting up. I think it's 3:30. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Enjoy. Mrs. Morris, you're in charge, right?
Great job, Mrs. Morris.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's like old times.
Right, exactly.
All right, moving on to item seven, old business. We have any updates we want to talk about, Mr. Schink or Mr.?
Just want to update a little bit on our facilities work sessions. I mean, first of all, if that doesn't get you excited about what's going on in our high school, it's a lot of fun to watch that, you know, watch the kids' excitement. So while you do all these things, you know, it's enjoyable. So, but on our facilities work sessions, just a little follow-up. You know, we've kind of met, appreciated all your guys' time with the two extra meetings in January and February. We've kind of met, you know, as a whole group to examine all of our needs and possible options for the future. I am going to be over the next couple of months as we lead into our April meeting and April retreat and May meeting, doing some visits out to some of our groups, you know, our facilities committee, our PTO, our staff, just making sure that we are communicating and discussing with them our facilities, needs, and options for the future a little bit. Just to kind of begin to update them on the whole thing, and all the surveys and polls and opinions that they've been able to input, just begin putting things into discussion with them as we go about making those decisions. Mr. Schink, will you got anything on the facilities work session, or Mr. Bailey?
No, getting everything ready. I mean, we did meet with a lady the other day just to kind of get an overview of direction. And I thought it was, she was really, really good. You know, she kind of just said, we got a great story, go out and tell it. You know, stress that it's need not once, go after your, you know, focus on your yes voters. Things like that, that I thought was kind of some good strategy that we'll kind of, you know, share with our committees and stuff like that. But I mean, I think we're getting ready to go. But it was really, she was, I thought, really, really good, so.
Which we can obviously spend more time on in our April work session, you know? You guys don't want to update you on those pieces, so.
Anyone have any questions or anything coming up?
Nothing.
No, thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight, new business. Item A, public participation. We have anybody in the office?
One, so coming home, coming home, is that just basketball then? They just, coming is football? Yeah. It's just like.
Coming's fall, coming is winter.
Okay. No, on the, I was telling Debbie, Deborah, my sister's name is Debbie. Deborah, the thought exchange is kind of, because it's hard to react to people's responses when they don't really fit what you're asking.
Some of the people got off topic.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
They did, yes. And so, yeah. I was like having a hard time because like, a good portion of them were not on the topic that was asked.
Yes.
Yeah, you kind of, you probably learned, that was one of their questions. And we did get a lot of good input. But there were probably, out of the five hundred responses, there were a good one hundred fifty that were off topic.
Well, and I think the interesting thing was that when you looked at the off-topic comments and the way they were rated, they were rated off-topic. So, you know, a lot of those were starting into the four, four and a half, the ones that were on topic and those that weren't. They may be important to those individuals at that time, but it wasn't important to that conversation.
And it wasn't necessarily important to the group.
Right.
Because when you rated them, you, you know, what came out were the top thoughts, you know, which focused on, for example, classroom space. I mean, that was the number one thought, you know? Some of the others, you know, that they just weren't important to people. They might have been important to that one or two persons, and they wanted a free way to get that out. So I guess the.
I'm like, it's important, but it's not important in this context, kind of.
Yes. What the other piece of that was, I mean, even though it's not important in that context, it was something that we could use, you know? And all the thoughts were shared with the principals. So they all have them, all, every one of them, so.
All right, moving on to eight, B, financial, one through eight. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second? We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
A first, a second, any questions? If none, Mr. Shankle, you call the roll please.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Benteen?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight, C, personnel motions, one through six, do we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
A first, a second, are there any questions? If none, Mr. Shankle, you call the roll please.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Benteen?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
All right, moving on to A, D, Board of Education reports. Mr. Benteen, what about you, Mrs. Casey?
So Great Oaks Spains on Wednesday. I don't have anything for them just yet. Um, legislative, the only thing that I saw in our, um, the little logs that get sent out was, um, something about the short-term substitute teaching license. Yeah. So it was, um, committee heard sponsor testimony sponsored by Adam Bird, which we've met, the guy from New Richmond, um, which would require the state board to issue a temporary short-term substitute teaching license to an approved applicant who will teach five or fewer consecutive days in the same classroom. And the bill would also require the state board to issue a temporary subs, uh, a temporary substitute teaching license to an approved applicant who will teach six or more consecutive days in the classroom. So we're already doing that though, right? Like, we're already.
Yeah, this would extend a lot of that flexibility for this year to future years.
Yeah, through twenty twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do, like, do we think that's going to be going on forever then? I mean, I know twenty twenty-five is only a three years out, but like.
I think that's probably was their goal this time because they put that in last year.
For twenty twenty-five or just for the year, right?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Then this year, they had to re-put it out there for twenty-one, twenty-two because the shortage existed and the massive need existed.
So they're continuing the shortage.
Yes, it's, I think it's continuation of that piece and a recognition of that the labor market has changed too. So.
And we're talk, we're raising ours, right? We talked about.
We're gonna, uh, you mean, we're gonna consider the changes in the salary schedule next year.
Okay.
So, so.
Okay.
We, I, I mean, we've actually done really, really well. And I think part of that was when we talked about that in this daily subs we just poured in. And that's been critical to us keeping score. So, I mean, there were times when we were short people.
Right.
In January.
But those subs, those, the full-time ones that we keep on all have a degree of some sort.
Those guys all did, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we're not truly affected.
This bill, we fired some. We have a few.
Okay.
With the two-year degree.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been nice for those, I mean, generally it's been community folks that want to be involved in the schools and they've done a nice job coming in.
Oh, good.
So we fired a few and they fell in spots where we don't have been able to fill it. So we, we have taken advantage of that.
Okay, so we have used them in the classroom for longer than.
Well, so you're gonna remember second, day-to-day subbing, not day-to-day.
Oh, okay, okay.
Those are people that pick up a day here, a day there.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
It's not somebody that's coming in every day.
Gotcha.
And some of them are getting like education degrees, right?
So, yeah, so those, I mean, in that old, you know, the old way, if you were a senior in college and didn't have your degree yet, couldn't solve or taking advantage of days when they're not student teaching and they have something to do at college. If they can get experience, get in here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's been beneficial.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, good way to recruit new teachers too.
And we still sit with substitute shortages probably two days a week.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we just fire our teachers from their playing time?
Fire our teachers from their playing time or reassign somebody inside of the building. As a different responsibility.
Okay. But hopefully that's getting better since our attendance rate is higher and, okay, okay.
It's much better.
Good deal. I saw a lot of attendance rate last week. I was so excited. I was like ninety-five point one is eight-seven or something?
Most of the time when you have a shortage, it's, we're doing professional development inside the building. It's about the teachers, so it's not.
Oh, okay.
So you're still able to get, do those things and.
Right.
It's beneficial, so you're gonna have a few holes, but it's kind of period by period, a staff route getting PV, so it's.
That's a positive thing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mrs. Gray?
Um, student achievement liaison. I shared, um, with Darrell and Teresa Scherzinger that the Ohio, Ohio Department of Education is accepting applications for participants to serve on a content advisory and rubric validation committee for Ohio State testing. So we have a few individuals who will be putting in applications to serve on that, which is great. And then, as always, the student achievement fair, they're accepting, um, applications nominations for the OSBA, um, capo conference already, so.
We just did that, I know, it was a while ago.
Those kind of, those kind of, um, sessions, applications come out so early. So just sharing that, um, that we, that I shared with them and we have some applicants out there.
Thank you. Mr. Arera?
Oh, Public Relations, we had our, uh, business recognition breakfast a couple of weeks ago on Thursday and that was, I thought that was a great success. We had a big turnout, that's the largest turnout they've had before because they normally have it.
I think it was certainly comparable, if not bigger than any. Yeah.
And it was just whatever I talked to, they really liked the idea of the breakfast. They, you know, they, they could do it on the clock, so to speak, you know? So, yeah, so that was great.
And a lot of people just hung out afterwards, networking with each other.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a lot of great business partners who contribute a lot of different ways. Um, and it sure was nice to hear our kids talk.
I was gonna say, the students' speakers were phenomenal.
Yeah.
And the number of people who commented on that.
Yeah.
They were great. And how about that guy out, uh, the customer? I mean, I, I thought the guy that got the award and just spoke, I was like, he floored me. I thought was so, so good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It was nice. I, so you guys liked the breakfast idea? It worked well? Yeah. That was in general the feedback that we heard too. You know, I said, I, I mean, I think that would be our inclination to lean towards that direction again next year. You want to change it up, do something different in the future.
Although I do like when we did the basketball game too, just so more people in the community can see that these are our partners, you know, that have, that have been coming out of our school or something.
And that's why maybe they do something, like they mix that in every third year or something. I, I don't know exactly. I know I got a lot of positive feedback from the participants, so, you know, it's kind of nice.
I was thinking about too, like, a, a way to invite, um, some other district colleagues and stuff in just so they can see and hear, right? Um, the opportunity to, to expand and grow together. I think it's really neat, some of the things that the businesses shared or like that the kids shared, um, the impact that I could, think it can have on the future, um, of education in general.
So you're talking about inside?
Yeah, 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 I, I like some of your fellow superintendents or some of Mark's colleagues.
Yeah.
Outside the district, um, inviting them in to see what we're doing.
Yeah. I will say what's interesting is I got a phone call from a superintendent of neighboring district who, after that event, had spoken to somebody and asked me about some of the things that we were doing. And wanted to make some connections. So, um, I think a lot of that, I mean, we are very fortunate to have generous people who are willing to give time worth it anything else. Now, some of those groups were there because they've given money, donations for scholarships and teacher grants and things as well. A lot of that is years and years of building relationships with people too. And it's not something that another district can just, right, jump at. But it is well worth it. I mean, for the opportunities that our kids get out of it, for sure.
Or maybe it's something the leadership team presents on at OSBA or something about building that, the relationships with the business partners and how successful that's been for our kids and connecting them to the internships and other opportunities out there. I just think of, um, hearing from those students how impactful it really was, whether you want to go, um, trade or college and, and how we're promoting that within.
Because we saw both perspectives then.
I know, yeah.
So.
And so, such, um, well-spoken, um, and game changer in those kids' futures, right?
Anything else, Mr. Arera? All right. All right, thanks, everybody. All right, we'll turn it over to item E, superintendent's report, Mr. Arera.
Well, the good news is there's so many good things going on. We saw some of the things I was gonna talk about. We've heard about some of the things I was gonna talk about. Our report won't be quite as long, but, um, I do want to highlight some things. You have my monthly update in front of you underneath of high-quality instruction. The bullet, first bullet and all the letters have to do with our end service day we have in February. And, uh, our teachers really do come in and work hard. Our staff comes in and work hard on those days. And you can see some of the things that were going on in there. Variety of things from, you know, early literacy instructional strategies training at Mark Hook with the letters training about, uh, teaching the science of reading. Um, then, uh, math with, uh, math teachers, district-wide math with a consultant, Amberger, uh, dive in and deeper at the elementary levels on their new math series and getting kids ready for their state assessments. Our secondary social studies and ELA teachers worked on what's called text sets and using reading in the content area to support literacy. Uh, so that was done through Mrs. Scherzinger's work in getting a grant for each of our teachers. We talked about last month, we're able, after learning about this in the morning, to go purchase books for their classrooms at Barnes and Noble. Science teachers worked with Mary Johnson, consultant, on getting students ready for their state assessments. And third and fifth through fifth grade ELA teachers collaborated together discussing writing, common expectations, and transition. So it was a very, very busy time. Um, also underneath this, we had, uh, the GHS academic quiz team finished first in the SBAC end-of-the-year tournament. I'm not sure Mr. Arera really could challenge our alumni team or not, but I think they might take us down. So, uh, we did see.
I think Mrs. Edwards carried our team, actually.
She did quite a good job there. Over there, it was funny because we actually got to play with some of them at the alumni day. Uh, they, those kids participated with us and they're really sharp kids. So congratulations to those kids on winning the end-of-the-year tournament. Um, we've got a lot of changes going on our state local report card. Uh, so our central office administrative team have been rolling those out to our district leadership team and our, and our administrative team. Mrs. Scherzinger will be visiting you guys to give you an update, uh, probably in June on that report card, uh, because it's a lot of different aspects of changes that have been made and what's probably going to be very confusing for our parents. Uh, it'd be confusing for our teachers at first as well. The targets really haven't changed, they've just kind of refined them. They're using different wording and things like that. But it will be important for us to keep up because if you know what the targets are, you're more likely to hit the targets. Um, so, uh, she'll be visiting us with that preparation for the final month before state assessments are going on all buildings. And then sophomores took the pre-ACT and juniors took the ACT this month. Um, so those are some of the things that, that were going on in that department. I've got several other bullets there, but I'm gonna go down to early literacy. Um, I really like some of the work that Mrs. Ginther and our ELA teachers at the elementary levels have going together. And that's the second bullet there, um, where we've had a lot of vertical conversation happen between teachers of different grade levels. So second grade talking to third grade, third grade talking to fourth grade, fourth grade talking to fifth grade, observing each other's classrooms, seeing what the expectations are below them and above them. Once again, if our second grade teachers have a very clear expectation of what third graders need to be able to do on that third grade reading guarantee, our kids are much better prepared for it. So it's been really neat to watch that going on between our buildings. Well, Mr. Bailey also talked about sometimes we have to facilitate some of that stuff during the day, which requires some subs.
So, quick question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, have they been doing that for years or is that something they're, they're exploring more now?
So we've been doing it off and on for years.
Yeah.
We're doing it very focused now, focusing on particular areas and trying, trying to do that with specific topics, um, in a much more coordinated approach. You know, before, it was one of those things you always dreamed of doing. It was just, it's very challenging to get your third grade teachers, for example, to spend a half a day in third grade teachers or secondary teachers' classrooms watching what they're doing to get the kids ready, watching what those kids are coming prepared to them for with. Um, I still get a lot of good ideas too, you know? Um, so it is a much more concentrated effort now than we've ever done. Um, college career readiness, just a couple of notes. Live books and scarlet of shadowing days have begun for our sophomores. And, uh, my first career day was, uh, held at Mark Hook and that's the monthly curriculum that we talked about last month. A little bit about where our, uh, local professionals from our career really, uh, come and read a related story to them and have various activities surrounded around the portrait of a graduate and careers. Under technology education, uh, we have, our, our teacher workstations have gotten, our teachers have gotten incredible using their, um, computers tool to help them for instruction. Um, and, uh, our workstations have gotten really far behind. So when we got the $221,000 grant this year, which reimbursed us for our Chromebooks, those computers were pretty much at end of life. So what we've been able to do is repurpose that money, no cost to our local taxpayers, of being able to replace our teacher workstations. Uh, so our teacher workstations, and we switched that to a mobile model for them. Uh, so they'll be working with laptops, which gives our staff a lot more flexibility.
Nice.
Yeah. Uh, that was not an option eight, nine years ago. Had that, some, I mean, you know, there was no way, so, uh, um, and it wasn't really something we planned to do this year until we got the grant. So that was a big plus. Our, uh, our, what I, they call their rookie robotics competition team made mostly of eighth graders, finished twelfth out of thirty-five, fifth place in recent competition. I guess, uh, great first day, so. Um, I think we talked about our plan of communication, so I'm gonna skip that. Um, under student development, we talked about a lot of that stuff. I do want to remind people that tomorrow morning, right in early, our eighth and ninth graders are going on, the ones that signed up for the DC trip. Wow, I didn't know it was four thirty in the morning, uh, checking in time, but that's good for them. Let's carry on.
I remember that day.
Yeah. So, and that was a surprise to us because that was supposed to be Thursday and Friday. It wasn't supposed to take four school days. I still think it's gonna be a valuable experience for our kids. Uh, but there was also not many options to that either at that point in time.
It must have been a logistical nightmare for them to like redo everything.
Yeah.
Like, I can't even imagine. How many kids are going?
Um, I think it's around, uh, I think it's like a hundred and seventy.
Oh, my gosh. Really?
Eighty-four, eighty-five.
It's even larger.
It's a lot.
Wow, okay. Hmm, yeah, and the schedule is like.
Non-stop?
Totally different than what it was Thursday and Sunday. So, yeah, they, they did a lot of good work.
Oh, that's awesome.
I will say, travel company is covering our cost of subs for the next year, so.
Oh, nice.
So. Um, and there also, we'll have the Health Source Mobile Dental Clinic visiting our, uh, build, our district uh, to help support our students in that manner. And then, uh, just some notes down at the bottom. Uh, we had two state, two middle school kids, Noah Jackson and Boston Nolan, qualify for the junior high state wrestling tournament. Congratulations to them. At our snowball dance, um, attended the township meeting on economic growth in the community. Todd, Brian and I all did that on a Saturday morning and watched, uh, as they talked about the different things that our trustees and zoning are doing to try to prepare for growth in the community. Um, particularly that was a focus on economic growth. It was really interesting. I think they've got a land use plan. Um, I think that, uh, they talked about revising that a little bit. There's so much in their land use plan that allows for only residential housing and residential housing only, which would create a lot of space for housing growth that we're beginning to see happen. Uh, so I think that, uh, they're a little bit wary of some of that and want to make some changes. Uh, so I think that, uh, they're a little bit wary of some of that, and, uh, want to make some changes, do you think? I think there's some incentives to help recruit businesses, which provide a little better support on tax base too. Anything else on that you guys want to add?
I think the only thing is that, that there is a couple of, um, funding avenues that they can go out, kind of like what we did, they did the TIF with us a few years back, that there may be, uh, depending on what they do, that the school would have to approve some of those agreements on how the tax revenue is spent. Because I know, like, with Bryant Industries, it's like a ten-year kind of abatement, their tax dollars went for that whole infrastructure, road, turn lane, that sort of thing, where that might be some way, I was picking it up, that we may need to do as far as, like, the traffic flow for a big subdivision or that sort of thing, that there'll be agreements to help out with that, so we're gonna have to approve those, but we'd have to see all, all that.
I think what was good to hear from each of those trustees in that presentation too was they're aware the impact this is gonna have on the schools, that, you know, either from a building standpoint to a financial standpoint. The growth has an impact, and they're not just, you know, they have to make decisions, but they are aware, and I think as they're aware, they're communicating that to other citizens of the township too, that you know, it just doesn't, don't build a neighborhood and have space for schools to operate in, so it's it's important to hear them saying that and understanding and working with us as partners, so. Good meeting.
Yeah, I thought that was probably one of the more interesting pieces of it was, if you mentioned over and over again, you know, that, I mean, the land is out there. There's zoning that controls it, and if people want to come in and build homes, or they want to come in and do this, as long as it fits the code, they're gonna be able to come in and do that.
Right.
And that, uh, I think it was a pro, proactive approach, much like we're taking to our facilities too as well, but it was a proactive approach in their, in their discussions. So, um, just other things, uh, you can see I attended the, a virtual legislative update with Senator Johnson, Representative Byrd, and Representative Schmidt. And, uh, we also attended a legislative breakfast with other superintendents with Representative Brad Winstrip. All of those efforts are advocacy efforts to support public education and, and the students of, of Goshen, so. Goals update, oh, I kinda, I guess I kinda, I reversed it, return to learn update, I will, this is gonna be brief, just to keep up on the numbers, and we'll continue just to compete for a lot of the points on the numbers, but real briefly, five thirty-nine, the first month of school, there's a lot of COVID, it was going around, wow, this is hard to catch here. January, fifty-eight staff members absent a day there for a while, two thousand three hundred thirty-two was the case rate per one hundred thousand. Our last meeting, four hundred sixty-one, this meeting, a hundred and three. So we're becoming much, much more manageable along with the changes that were made in the requirements of our, of our, uh, quarantine and contact tracing and, and all of those things from the federal government and the state government, changes that were made. Uh, you can see that, that's what we had in February and now, uh, so we had an increase of seventeen students and five staff members in the past, uh, four weeks is it, which is, uh, much, much improved over where we were at, so. Attendance rate, you can see it's happened, it's, it's gone up dramatically, uh, which we're excited about, uh, you know, whenever you it's getting to the point where, you know, I, we're continuing to keep an eye on it. I've slowed down my updates to you guys, because this has decreased dramatically. If for some reason or other, that changes, um, we'll, uh, increase the frequency of that. But just trying to keep that, uh, in our, in our heads up. And that's just, uh, we've communicated the change on the mask no longer required on the bus. Um, and we continue to use this term common sense on everything at this point in time. Like, the hygiene and disinfection, the cleaning services prevent all illnesses, so we'll continue to do that. Our air filtration system continues to work and will help prevent other illnesses, and reduction of airborne viruses and molds and things like that. I really tried to, you know, have the focus, and, and our, and our principals have tried to do this all year long to the best of their ability, but now, to the very best of their ability, that, you know, this is that normality piece and rebuilding things, we hope that, uh, we hope that they're there, and we're gonna continue to do those pieces, so it's wonderful to. I know that in January, I had parents calling me on the van trip. They were worried about their kids going on the van trip, it wasn't many, it was, it had a few cases of parents, and, uh, van trip worked out excellent. Mr. O informed me today, he got to return every single one of his COVID tests back to him. So, every single one of them, which is nice, so. Any questions on that?
I do have a, I have a question on that.
Okay.
Um, I know a while ago, we talked about, um, obviously through this time, we are experiencing different and new things that would be assessed. Of course, there's probably some things like digital interviewing for internships and, and various things like that, that are beneficial to our business partners or um, other things, but we have made some changes over time because of COVID. And, um, sometimes you continue to hear, like, we're doing this because of COVID. Yes, the numbers are down, right, there's no masking on buses, so I'm just wondering the timeframe of the continued assessment and what's beneficial to continue those efforts, and then to go back to ways that we used to do some larger group type efforts.
I, I think, I think you hit the nail on the head, some things we're doing better now. You know, some of the stuff that, like, the high school scheduling nights, you know, the, adding the idea of a virtual night. Parents love that, virtual parent-teacher conferences, parents love that. You know, some people, we still, we offer those face-to-face, some people choose not to come in, I could do it from home, I could do it in my car. But we, on our, my principal meeting tomorrow, for example, one of the things that we have is that discussion that it seems like every time we undertake that discussion, sometimes we get set backwards, like last June. But the discussion of some of the stuff that we need, that was exceptional from the past, that we need to rebuild. And we need, there's some of the stuff we need to put back in. That we weren't allowed to do.
Right.
Or wasn't a good idea to do. To where now it's probably, you know, it's probably time for a lot of that stuff to come back in, that we, I mean, and honestly, eighty-five percent of stuff was back in, but some of the stuff wasn't.
Yeah.
So tomorrow, our principal's meeting, agenda, that's one of our topics. You know, because we got a lot of stuff coming up with end-of-year stuff.
Well, yeah, and, and that's what, I was speaking a little bit towards that, like, celebratory stuff that we've always, I think we've historically been great at.
Yeah.
Um, and that our smaller community, um, definitely appreciates. And so, making sure we're, uh, not just using it as an excuse or something, right, that we're getting back to, um, providing what we can provide based on where we are, and I get it, there may be a setback or something like that, but if there's not, continuing to get back to some of those.
I think you're, Stephanie said there in her presentation, you missed that stuff, you missed it as principals, you missed it as kids. Getting parents back in, I know PTO contacted Darrell, you know, father-daughter dance. Those things, I think it's, as you slowly tick through those end-of-the-year and the next year startup to your stuff, oh, we can do that again, and you kind of get that smile, or, you know, yes, we can do it again, but here's a couple things that we learned from that, but I think that's an exercise he's gonna take the principals through too, is, is kind of look back and look forward, and what do we need to remember that's important to this community that we lost, so.
And I, I, the National Honor Society thing was making me think of it too, when Stephanie said, like, how mu, how well it was attended. Um, I think people miss that, right?
Yes.
Not only celebrating their own children, but others, and, um, celebrating the hard work of, like, the staff and everybody who puts into it as well, right? I really think that's something that we've done well historically, that I kind of miss.
Yep. Agreed. Other things on here, we, I think, uh, Bill gave the business advisory update. And so we'll skip that, um, just to remind Board of Retreat, I put on your table a sample agenda. This is just to start, looks like this.
Oh.
I said, Mr. Bailey will be passing out for you.
I don't queue. I forgot, I was supposed to.
It's all good.
So, um, basically, we talked about a, doing an assessment of, and having some principals and directors reporting how we're doing on progress of our SMART goals, target areas, portrait of graduate escher funding, and a lot of the programming we put in this year to close the gaps. So they'll be reporting out, and then we're going to be doing a group activity. I think we talked a lot about this, identifying celebrations and areas of challenge for the district. Um, and maybe some next steps along with that. Mr. Schinkel doing, uh, some budget work for us. See there, um, what we have left at escher funding and a five-year forecast. And then we'll be talking about facilities plan. How's that sound for a busy day? Sounds like it's gonna work. It's a busy day. Okay, just remind you, that's April ninth at eight AM, so. And then, uh, tomorrow night, it is the Spring Conference at Laurel Oaks. That's all that I have, unless you guys have another.
Sure.
All right. Anybody have anything else on the other, on the fore side? All right, next item on the agenda is executive session. Per Higher revised Code one twenty-one point twenty-two, uh, we're gonna go under preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining session with public employees. Do we have a motion to go into an executive session?
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
We have a first, a second, any questions? If none, Mr. Schinkel, you call the roll?
Mr. Bintin?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Arera?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
We'll go to executive session at seven fifty-nine.
See ya.
Copied it for you.
Yeah, I gotta go get it, but I'll be here. Right, have fun with that.
He told me. He said, you need to, because he sent me this one, it's the same exact thing.
Right.
This?
All right.